Welcome. Good evening. I would like to call the May 2, 2023 Stanley County Board of Education meeting to order. Welcome to those of you in attendance and to those that may be joining us via live streaming. We appreciate you being here and your support of Stanley County Schools. Before I go any further, we have a new platform that we are using, which is Board Docs. Mr. Graves, I see you sitting there. Have I not asked for this ever since I've been on the board? So we're getting into the 21st century. What I would like to say to all of you that are here, if you go to www.stanleycountyschools.org and look at the District tab, you can click on the Board Docs tab. That will lead you to the platform where you can view the agenda, you can view attachments, and really, for us, it increases that transparency because you're able to see all of this. But I am asking you, before we go any further tonight, this is new. It's new for our board. I'm learning as we go along. So be patient, and again, thank you for being here. At this time, I would like to call on Dr. Ruthus Lefler for our invocation and pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Dear God, thank you for letting us gather tonight in this free land and make decisions that will affect our county and our state and our country. Help us to make the right decisions in your light and help us to move forward in a positive way. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on your agenda, you will see recognitions. We have some outstanding recognitions at this time. I will turn this over to you, Dr. Dennis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. First, I want to bring up Ms. Debbie Rose. We're going to do our first recognition of some staff. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, members of the board and guests. Tonight, thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. Tonight, we recognize and celebrate Support Staff of the Year selected from each school who represent the best of what is happening in their schools every day. These staff members are comprised of both certified and classified staff who serve the students outside the classroom. They all bring excellence to their work and are guided by the determination to do what is right, what is fair, and what is best for our students. These remarkable employees have made an important investment in their schools and their students. They welcome, smile, encourage, give, and work relentlessly to fulfill their school district's obligation to its children. Every winner we honor tonight is someone who has demonstrated that every day they find their purpose and measure their own success through the success of our students. For every employee recognized tonight, there are many more like them all across the district who work outside the spotlight to provide a safe and nurturing and positive environment for our students. The dedication, caring, and expertise of each of these individuals will leave lasting legacies in the lives that they touch. So please join me in extending congratulations and gratitude to each of these extraordinary From Almarl High School, Ms. Jentsey Spate. Ms. Johnson, she's not here. And she's not here. From Baden, we have Casey Byrd. Central, Erica Adams. East Elementary, Corletta Barbie. END Elementary, Mr. Lance Barbie. Locust Elementary, Megan Kessigich. Millingport Elementary, Ashley Quezenberry. North Stanley High School, Dr. David Aloys. North Stanley Middle School, Corwin Barbie. Norwood Elementary, Julia Poplin. Oakboro Choice STEM, Ms. Lisa Waits. South Stanley High School, Augusta Clark. South Stanley Middle School, Shonda Bleelock. West Stanley Middle School, Nicole Turner. STEM Early College, Mika Crump. I think that's all we have represented tonight. Once again, congratulations to each of you. Thank you for what you do every day. Yep. Before, my apologies, I overlooked Ms. Nikki Cleaver from West Stanley High School. Definitely want to make sure she gets recognized. Thank you, board.
We certainly congratulate all of you. Are you still taking pictures? Before you sit down, Ms. Spate, could I possibly have y'all just kind of shift down a little bit more right there? Dr. Dennis, do you think we could do the next set of our recognitions and then our board wants to come around and greet all of you and congratulate all of you?
Yeah, we have four more individuals to recognize, and I will call up Ms. Rachel Turner for the ESS Employees of the Month.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board. Today, we are going to recognize four wonderful ESS staff. The first is Heather Gregory, and it is said that Mrs. Gregory is dedicated and reliable to the staff and students at Norwood. She was asked to move to a new position this year and was very hesitant to take the position. She has done an incredible job learning the new role and supporting the students in her classroom. She always has a smile on her face and is a valuable member of the team at Norwood, and it is said she is the kindest of them all. So Heather Gregory, thank you so much. Next, we have Cheryl Burleson, who has been in a long-term position at North Stanley Middle. Ms. Burleson's work has been influential at North Stanley Middle this year. She does anything that is asked of her without hesitation. She puts the needs of the students first by doing what is best for them and is also a great resource to the staff and her own background experience. Ms. Burleson is a part of the North Stanley Middle family, and we are forever grateful to her. And we have Brandy Barfield, and I am actually going to speak on behalf of this because Brandy has, when there is not a sub at Baden, I hear Brandy's name. Brandy has been a TA who, when there is not a sub, she goes everywhere and anywhere. She has filled many vital positions this year that the school and myself could not thank her enough, where she has saved the day almost a weekly basis. So Brandy Barfield from Baden. The last sub, Sanika Davis. She was in a long term at South Stanley Middle. She couldn't be here with us tonight, but she is serving in another long term at Aquadale Pre-K, and she has fulfilled many EC positions for us. So thank you.
Thank you. We certainly want to come around and congratulate you, our 2023 Support Staff of the Year and our ESS Employees of the Month. We could not operate without all of you, and we appreciate you very, very much. So board members, if you'd like to go around. I think everyone in the audience needs to give them a round of applause. I know that our board is getting ready to go into closed session. And while we're in closed session, I know that some of you may want to leave during that time. Again, congratulations, and we appreciate all you do. Board members, at this time, I would like a motion to enter into closed session for Personnel Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6. Student Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1. And Attorney/Client Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3. May I have a motion?
Make a motion and go into closed session.
Motion by Ms. Poplin, a second. Second by Ms. Watson. All in favor, say aye. Pose no. The board is now in closed session. Board back into open session. Once again, welcome to all of you that are in attendance, to those that may be joining us via live streaming. We appreciate you being here and your support of Stanley County Schools. Next on your agenda, we have recognitions. So again, Dr. Dennis, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Next, we are going to recognize our District Science Fair winners.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board. STEM education instills skills such as problem solving, critical thinking, and creativity. These skills are important for personal growth and development regardless of one's schooling and/or career path. It is my privilege to have the opportunity to recognize and celebrate the achievements of some remarkable students who have shown us that the future is bright. This past January, we were able to hold our first in-person County Science Fair since COVID forced us to remote learning. Students from ENDE, Locust Elementary, and Oakboro Choice STEM took on the challenge of completing science fair projects. These students represented their schools and our county well at both the local and regional levels. Tonight, we are recognizing the students who placed at the top of the Stanley County School Science Fair. In the Elementary Division, third place from Locust Elementary is Lauren Simnick. Second place from Locust Elementary, we have Brooklyn Oliver. And first place, also from Locust Elementary, we have Laney Tucker and Claire Kessidou. Kessidou. And in our Middle School Division, we had one student in the entire county to complete a project, and first place from Oakboro Choice STEM, Isabella Zamora-Sodana. The second group of students that I am honored to recognize took a leap into the unknown and competed at the first, maybe annual, STEM Fest Trebuchet Contest that was held on April 22. This engineering and design challenge had students building a catapult-like device to compete in distance and accuracy challenges. In the Elementary Division, Locust Elementary sweeps once again. Coached by Megan Geddings, we have CJ Blackman. Aiden Hathcock. James Queen. And Max and Sides. In the High School Division, from South Stanley High School, coached by Billy Conti, we have Austin Anay. Christopher Noel Quintero Lopez. And Jackson Shed. Thank you.
If the families of these students, if y'all will remain once they sit down, I know we're going to ask them to come back up shortly. But again, congratulations.
Thank you and congratulations to all our Science Fair and STEM Fest winners. Next, we would like to recognize our AIG cohort, Mr. Plummer.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Our Title II funding for the 2022-2023 school year has afforded teachers in Stanley County Schools the opportunity to further their education and obtain an add-on license for academically and/or intellectually gifted education. Through a partnership with Pfeiffer University, we have nine teachers in the district who have finished this year-long coursework and will add the AIG credentials to their current teaching license. Completion of this coursework not only opens doors for those teachers to deliver instruction in the capacity of an AIG teacher, it enables them to offer more rigorous differentiated instruction in their general classrooms. We are grateful for their dedication to the students of Stanley County Schools and their perseverance through extended content. I am grateful for Ms. Nancy Hatley, Director of Federal Programs, and Dr. Angie Kern, Pfeiffer University Professor, for their collaboration in making this opportunity possible for us. Please join me in thanking and congratulating the following teachers who have completed their AIG add-on licensure. Ms. Jennifer Hamilton, North Stanley High School. Ms. Kimberly Melton, Albemarle High School. Ms. Chesney Palmer, West Stanley Middle School. Ms. Taryn Sereth, West Stanley Middle School. Ms. Diane Austin, Millingport Elementary School. Ms. Emily Emery, Richfield Elementary School. Ms. Madison Ragsdale, Central Elementary School. Ms. Christie Pickler, Baden Elementary School. And Ms. Brandy Chandler, Baden Elementary School. Thank you all.
Will you please not leave to go home yet because we want to call you back up? Thank you.
Next, I want to bring up our Stanley Star Award winners. Ms. Wood.
Each month, Stanley County Schools will recognize two classified employees and two certified employees through the Stanley Star Award Program. This month, these employees were nominated by the administration at Richfield Elementary and West Stanley High School. Employees were surprised by a visit from Dr. Dennis and were provided with a $25 gift card sponsored by the Nehemiah Project. We thank the Nehemiah Project for their generous donation of $1,500 to cover all awards for the year. As I call your name, please step forward to accept your certificate. From Richfield Elementary, our certified staff member is Ann Miller. Ms. Miller is the curriculum coach and has been one of the few consistencies at Richfield Elementary in administration this year. She has stepped up as a leader to the school and has helped the school run smoothly. She possesses kindness, creativity, and ambition that allows her to excel in areas of her life. Her empathy and compassion makes her a source of comfort and support for Richfield staff and students. Mrs. Miller is one of a kind and truly special. From Richfield Elementary, our classified staff member is Michelle Trupia. Mrs. Trupia is a teacher assistant, always ready and willing to jump in whenever she is needed. She stays busier than a bee and does not like to have any downtime. Richfield is beyond blessed to have such a hard-working individual who cares so much about the students and staff at the school. From West Stanley High School, the certified staff member is Mr. Brandon Morton. Mr. Morton could not be with us tonight because he is also a coach and is coaching this evening. I did want to recognize him. He's a social studies teacher who began teaching as a second career this year and has transitioned seamlessly into the classroom and has already begun to have a positive impact inside and outside of the classroom, is a team player and asset to West Stanley High School staff. From West Stanley High School, our classified staff member is Tanya Arrowood. Ms. Arrowood is the data manager and is well-respected by her colleagues and peers. She goes above and beyond to ensure that everyone on staff has what they need to be successful. She assists parents, students, and staff on a daily basis. Ms. Arrowood's support makes everyone else's jobs easier. Congratulations to you all.
Congratulations, and please don't leave yet.
All right, thank you. The last awards I have are Local Elected Leaders Academy. Would Ms. Glenda Gibson and Ms. Carla Poplin please come forward? Thank you. So Ms. Gibson and Ms. Poplin recently participated in a professional development from the UNC School of Government Center for Public Leadership and Governance. And it's my understanding that this is open to elected county and city officials, whether it be school board, county commissioners as such, across North Carolina. I personally went to a professional development to get my Certified Technology Officer License through the UNC School of Government, and they do an outstanding job of preparing local and school officials and also employees for their jobs. But the Local Elected Leaders Academy, which is also called the LELA, is a program that creates continuous pathways for learning and recognition designed to suit the needs of local elected officials at any phase of their tenure in public office. Local elected officials automatically become a part of the Local Elected Leaders Academy upon completion of the Essentials County or Municipal Program. So the curriculum is divided into four parts. The first part is laws, roles, and responsibilities. Then there's also a part with pathways to local leadership. to local leadership. Then you'll do pathways to collective leadership. And the cornerstone is pathways to advanced leading and governing. It's also my understanding this was asynchronous class that you would go at parts of the time to the UNC campus to actually do your professional development. There was also some online components, and there were some components where you had to complete several tasks or projects. So both of these certifications are certificates awarded to Ms. Glenda Gibson for having attained Leading the Way to the Board Excellence, and also to Ms. Carla Poplin for having attended Leading the Way to the Board Excellence. And I want to congratulate you both and thank you for your progress. That's all I have this time. Board chairs asked that not everyone leave. I think the board wants to recognize you individually.
Thank you. If we could, could we please have, and I know Dr. Amy Blake Lewis will have to help us with this, could we please have all of our district's Science Fair winners, our STEM Fest contest winners, our AIG cohorts, the Stanley Star Award recipients? Could we have all of you to please come back to the front? I know that our board would like to come around and congratulate all of you. If we have some administrators here of these schools as well, along with you, Ms. Snyder? I'm calling your name. But any of our school administrators, if they are here, teachers as well, please come up. Thank you and congratulations to all. We are so proud of you. Thank you. Dr. Dennis, I don't know if you need to stay down there. We have next, exchange student presentations on our agenda. I'm not sure who exactly is in charge with our exchange students.
Can I say here?
Take just a second.
Take just a minute.
We have so many, it seems like, recognitions and a short amount, kind of a small space. We're going to have to start enlarging somehow. We're so happy to have you. So I'm just going to turn this over to you.
Thank you. I'm Camila. I'm the exchange student from Brazil. And I wanted to say this is the best experience in my life. I really appreciate this place and the people I already met here. And I want to say thank you. Thank you for my family here, for taking care of me. Thank you for my parents for giving me this opportunity to be here. And thank you for my teachers. They are all so amazing and help me with everything, especially Ms. Howell, my English teacher. And learning a new language is not easy. So she helped me a lot. So thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you. Camila, now, is there someone else besides you here?
No, I don't think so. Yeah, we have another exchange student, but they couldn't be here, sorry.
Okay, I'm going to ask our board members to mic up a minute. Do you have? We're going to put you on the spot. I just want to learn a little bit more. Like, how long have you been here? And you're at South Stanley High School, right?
Yeah, South Stanley. And I think four months now. I have one month left. I arrived January 13. And I don't know how to explain this experience. It's really, really good. It's like a new culture and new foods, new subjects, new people, new language. It's amazing. It's like, really, really good.
It's awesome. We had a Taylor Swift concert, did you?
No, sorry.
Board members, does someone else want to ask a question? Mr. Sorensen?
Camila, I was told to ask you about an alligator story. They have alligators in Brazil?
Oh. I think we have, but not near my city. I really live in a really, really seedy. So I'm not used to it. And here, I saw an alligator with my family and I was really, really scary.
How hard has it been to learn our language?
I studied a lot of years in Brazil too. So it was not so difficult to learn new words and stuff like this. I think the most part difficult is like how to speak like with native people. But my family's helped me, my teachers, my friends. So it is not so difficult when you're like speaking English all your day.
Right. Anyone else?
I'm curious about what made you choose Stanley County schools in North Carolina?
Actually, we didn't choose the school. It's maybe like, I don't know. Like, my family chose me, not like me. But I was so happy when I saw my family. They are like really, really amazing. I couldn't be more happy.
Awesome. Are you planning to stay or will you be returning to Brazil?
I can just stay one year, but I'm leaving in one month. But I intend to come back soon to visit.
I hope so.
Yeah, me too.
And I know that I see your administrator back there, Ms. Fallen. There may be other South Stanley people here. But we're just delighted to hear from you. I think that we can do this. Would you mind just coming up here? And I think we can lean across and shake your hand and congratulate you. Thank you, Camila. Dr. Dennis, next. We have school growth awards.
We do. Mr. Plummer, you come help me with these awards. Bring your laptop. All right. First, we have the Elementary Growth Award. Now, this is an award that was started last year. And we had a board member, Mr. Bill Sorensen, who wanted to recognize the growth because a lot of times, a lot of emphasis is put on your proficiency, which is how well a child may do a score on a test. But then there's another component calculated, which is the growth, which is the amount of progress the student made from one year to the next. Now, you can, if you look at the growth, and we have good growth in our schools and good growth with our students, eventually proficiency would take care of itself. So we like that, since a lot of times when it comes to the school report card being so heavy on proficiency, you get a lot of, you know, that has a high calculation right now with the current model of how our schools are rated. So we wanted to reach out and we wanted to award the schools in the four areas that have the highest growth. And we have four areas. One is the elementary school. One is the middle school. One is the high school. And then we also recognize a choice school. So this year, our High Growth Award for elementary is Baden Elementary School.
I accept this on behalf of the staff and also for Mr. Damon Rhodes, who was principal at the time. So congratulations to him as well.
Okay, next, our High Growth Award goes, for the middle school, goes to West Stanley Middle School. So Ms. Honeycutt could not be here tonight because she's on an Outer Banks trip. So we have two teachers coming. One was already here for an award. Both of you, actually, yeah, to accept the award. Next, our High Growth Award for our high schools will go this year to West Stanley High School. And finally, for our choice schools, our High Growth Award goes to Oprah Choice STEM School. This is for the 2021-2022 school year. The reason so late is the school report card is not actually finalized until March. And that's why we have to wait later in the year to actually do this until the state says, well, we give the go for everything. So another round of applause and congratulations to our high growth schools.
Thank you. If y'all will. If you'll start down there, I'm going to see if board members will just shake your hands right here because the board members are going to kill me if I make them get up much more. Congratulations to all of the recipients this evening. And that's at the beginning of our board meeting as well as now. I have been asked, board members, to take a break so if we can have a five-minute recess at this time, I will call us into recess for five minutes. Session after a short recess. Next on the agenda is public comments. In accordance with Policy 2310, public participation at board meetings each month, part of at least one regularly scheduled meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comments. However, the public comment session will not exceed 15 minutes total except by majority vote of the board. Board Docs provides that three-minute timer. And again, this is new with using Board Docs. And I know that Ms. Hope Miller will probably have that timer. And you will see it. So after three minutes, if you are still continuing to talk, I will step in and ask you, tell you that time is up. The first person is Mr. Anthony Graves. Thank you for being here, Mr. Graves.
I noticed you were looking at me the whole time you were saying that. So now, hold on. Where's the clock? I want to see where the clock is. Also, I have to say something real quick before my remarks. Two things. First of all, Camila, I think that's awesome. I work with a huge team of engineers down in Brazil, mostly women, in Porto Alegre. And I have not met a person from Brazil who is not super sharp. And I know she's going to be very successful no matter what she puts her mind to. Is she still here? No, she's not here. But anyway, she's awesome. The other thing was, I ran into John and I told The other thing was, I ran into John and I told him to sit next to me, so y'all thought you were in trouble, but uh, anyway, so sorry for setting you guys up. Okay. Back when I was, had the privilege of being on the school board, uh, I had a number of parents reach out to me about um, a couple policies, 3200 and 3210. Um, and we tabled those policies and they have to do with reexamination of supplementary materials, uh, which is Policy Number 3200R, and then 3220, excuse me, 3210 is parental inspection of and objection to instructional materials. And the reason why I'm here tonight is that I'm asking you guys to table those two policies again, um, and invite uh, the public to participate in the upcoming, the next policy committee meeting. And the reason for that is, um, just in, in general, the policies I think are pretty weak, um, the way that they're written. Uh, and hopefully, if you've taken the time to read through them, you have spotted some of the flaws that I found as well. And I wanted to offer some suggestions. Uh, I did put together, Mrs. Heather Carlson, who's a parent, um, she was one of the individuals that reached out to me when I was on the board. Uh, she had kept in touch with me, and when you guys mentioned that you were going to um, be potentially voting on those policies this month, I said, well, we should get together, look at the policy. And I just want to summarize this, and I'd like to share it personally in the committee meeting when you guys have the next committee meeting, but um, I'm hoping that the board is going to take the opportunity with these particular policies to um, create a committee that ultimately will hear these objections, where these objections will come in from the public, they would come in from a parent and/or a legal guardian, for example, that's one of the things that's left out, a legal guardian. Um, and since these are official policies, they should be specific. But when these objections come in, instead of those objections being heard by an individual principal and the superintendent, um, these, these objections could be heard by a committee of the superintendent, deputy superintendent, head of curriculum and instruction, where they would then um, within 45 days, come to the next committee meeting and present their recommendations. Give them time to get information, contact the teachers if applicable, the librarians, et cetera. Bring that before the committee, and then the committee can then make a recommendation to the full board. Ultimately, what that does is, it means the people that the voters are connected with have the responsibility to make those decisions instead of pushing it off on people who aren't elected. So that's what I wanted to um, to mention, and I, I have more information I'd like to share in that committee meeting, but I'm just asking if you guys would table those two policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Next is Ms. Whitney Short.
This school has went from the right to a fair education to the right education is no longer fair. You pick and choose which kids have transportation, which schools deserve more attention, and which parents you want to silence. You despise mobile trailers at Locust Elementary School due to overflow, but ironically, that same day, you had two delivered to Stanfield Elementary School. You stand behind the principals that abuse their authority, you dismiss and silence the parents fighting for their kids' rights, and you mostly hurt the families doing all they can to put a roof over their heads. You all sit on your high thrones and make excuses for having no solutions to bus issues, staff issues, and your lack of communication. You're blinded to your reputation amongst this county, and you claim that the majority of the county favors you because you were the one elected. I will say that it's easy to get elected when you're riding in the pocket of the superintendent, who is in the pocket of the governor. If we had seen the truth of who you truly were, would the votes have been the same? Would we want a board member making decisions of our kids' mental health when their picture was just recently removed from a local post office after being banned for cursing and acting a fool in front of the customers? How about a member who favors his health and lungs over our children's by forcing them to wear masks during COVID, but not himself? Do we want a superintendent who actively ignores parents' emails and has zero communication with the parents of the children he makes decisions for? Why are there 10 of you sitting before me, but you operate on one mind, one opinion, and one decision? Silence is complicity. You are all complicit to the needs of the ones who elected you. Parents have asked to consider the reopening of Ridgecrest. You say it's too expensive. So for the purchase of a house and land, and then to expand by building onto Locust Elementary, and then the purchase of two trailers at Stanfield, that sounds like a pretty penny that could have gone towards Ridgecrest. Why do we have restrictions on our children's school computers? Are you afraid that they'll search for inappropriate things like porn? No worries, they can just check out a book from their school library if they'd like to know how to properly have sex in elementary. Want to be a cat and purr in class? Sure, as long as you're not too loud. Do you want to be called a different gender at school? Absolutely. And according to Governor Cooper, we don't even have to tell your parents. The government believes that they can parent my child better than me, and what better place to remove my rights than an eight-hour school day? This is where a strong, united, trustworthy school board comes into play to fight for our rights and make decisions for our children's futures. And I believe that you are none of those things. You created a committee to decide whether or not a book is appropriate for our school libraries. Why is a parent not a part of that committee? Why do we have three years to bring that book back to your attention if you decided that it was appropriate? And let's discuss the Parents' Bill of Rights. The rights to know what is being taught in school, the right to be heard, the right to see the school budget and how they spend their money, the right to protect your child's privacy, Morgan Perez, and the right to be updated on any violent activity at the school. How many parents will agree with me that you have all violated our parents' bills of right? What with pornography, transgender, kitty cats, budget issues, staff issues, bullies, and whatever else chooses to come along, we will be here fighting for our children and standing up to the biggest bullies of all of them, the Stanley County School Board. Now more than ever, we need a board to fight for what the parents want, and I ask you to resign and step down so that we can rise and stand up.
Thank you, Ms. Short.
The ones that take your place can solve Bus 91's issues before our children graduate. You can't pick and choose who gets three minutes.
Next person is um, Ms. Morgan Perez. Welcome, Ms. Perez.
Did you know that it is against your own policy to respond to public commenters? It seems that you all get to pick and choose when to respond and when to ignore, which is exactly how SCS handles truancy and attendance issues. It is not necessary for me to sign the FERPA agreement to meet with you all privately to discuss my situation. It is not necessary for me to sign for you to publicly discuss and clarify the SCS attendance and truancy policy and procedure. I would like to receive an explanation for why I was selected, seemingly at random, for a criminal truancy charge. There were a thousand other students whose families were eligible for a criminal truancy charge, but they were not charged. I would like to know why I was singled out for something that was overlooked in the large majority of other situations. I would like to know why my son was expelled from his class and school. There were other students with NSCS at his school and in his class that had what you consider excessive absences for various reasons, and those students were not expelled. I would like to know why my son was singled out for something that was overlooked with many other students. Instead of you continuing to read the same statement to me over and over again, I would like to request a meeting to discuss my situation and receive an explanation and answers to my questions. I believe a meeting with you all would help me to regain some confidence and trust in SCS. I would like to be able to send my son back to SCS at some point. I have been coming to BOE meetings for quite some time. I'm tired of repeating myself. Please meet with me. It is the right action and will help to resolve my situation. It is your job to resolve and explain legitimate issues in SCS. You have the ability and the duty to do that. I expect to have someone contact me to schedule a meeting. I continue to hope that this board will correctly resolve my situation. I also hope that my continued efforts will somehow help this board to see that the current way of handling legitimate and serious concerns is not working. Students and families are being harmed due to your lack of action. Consistency and effective communication is something that you can easily implement, and you would see immediate and positive results. Please consider taking this advice for the betterment of the school system and its relationship with the community.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Next, board members on the agenda is the consent agenda with the approval of the minutes of the April 4th, 2023 regular meeting and the April 19th, 2023 special called meeting. If there are no corrections, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? A motion by Ms. Whitaker, a second. Second by Ms. Watson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Oppose, no. The consent agenda has been approved. Thank you. Next, we have on the agenda, the Norwood Classroom Dedication Proposal. Um, I will turn this over to you, um, Dr. Amy Blake Lewis, and I see Ms. Mandy Eford.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much. Uh, this is in response to a public comment at last month's board meeting. So uh, we are following board policy, and I will let Ms. Eford uh, share uh, some comments with you.
All right, I'm gonna just share the uh, memo that we'll share with Dr. Dennis, um, read the Barbara Foster classroom. Norwood Elementary School has a rich heritage in Stanley County. The school has been the center of the Norwood community for over 100 years, and has undergone several remodeling stages over time. There are strong ties between the school and community leaders, especially the Norwood Police Department and Michelin, and active PTO plans events for both students and staff, which also involve the community. At the March meeting of the Stanley County Schools Board of Education, Mr. David Deese recounted his memories, or excuse me, spoke publicly about his experiences as a first grade student during the 1967-68 school year. Mr. Deese recounted his memories of his teacher, Ms. Barbara Foster. He vividly recounted the first day of school that year. It was the day that Ms. Foster became the first African-American teacher at Norwood School. To mark such a momentous event in the history of Norwood Elementary School, and in accordance with Stanley County Board of Education Policy 6405, I hereby formally request that the classroom assigned to Ms. Foster in 1967 be named the Ms. Barbara Foster Classroom in her honor. Furthermore, I request that a plaque be placed at the door of the classroom bearing the following inscription, "The Barbara Foster Classroom, Courage for the Betterment of All, 1967 to 1968."
Madam Chair, uh, in accordance with Board Policy 6405, we have presented it to the superintendent, and it is in your packet this evening, and it does require board approval to move forward, so I would um, ask for a vote at this time.
Madam Chair, after uh, being presented with this information and you guys being presented as well, uh, it is my recommendation that we name the classroom after Ms. Barbara Foster.
Okay, you have heard the um, proposal and the recommendation. Uh, may I have a motion to approve naming of the Norwood Classroom after Ms. Barbara Foster?
I make a motion that we approve to name the Norwood Classroom after Ms. Barbara Foster.
I have a motion by Ms. Poplin, a second. Second by Ms. Watson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Oppose, no. This motion has passed. We are delighted. Mr. Deese, would you step, would you come back up here, please? We had so many comments after the last board meeting with, with what you said, the tribute that you gave to Ms. Foster. Um, that, I can't imagine the bravery of her during 1967, and, and her being the first, okay, African-American teacher there. And I'm not sure who the principal was at that time. Do we know?
Mr. Deese, yes.
It was Mr. Coggan. Mr. Coggan.
Because what a brave thing as well, with, with him and everyone in that, everyone in that community. Um, I, I just want to tell you, and I know our board members do too, that we express from the bottom of our hearts the gratitude to you for what you have done. Um, Ms. Eford, Dr. Amy Blake Lewis, Dr. Dennis, we look so forward to this, and I think you're planning something?
Yes, ma'am, I can give a brief update. Um, we have made contact with Ms. Foster's nephew, and so we are working to make arrangements for her to be with us on June 6th. Uh, we are planning some events at the school that day involving the current Norwood students because we want them to be part of that history. Uh, and also for the class of 67-68 who was with Ms. Foster that year, we're reaching out to them to make sure that they are invited to spend some time with her as well. And then uh, we hope to have a formal presentation at the board meeting that evening.
That's awesome. I was getting ready to say, are we gonna get to meet this wonderful lady?
Yes, yes, we are working with her nephew to make that happen.
I love it. Mr. Deese, thank, thank you again. Any board member, do you have a comment that you would like to make to Mr. Deese while he's here?
Can you just appreciate your loving her like you did?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, thank you. I want to, you know, it's a dream come true. It's, it's the good guys win one, you know, to see that you recognize uh, what happened that day and that year, and to, and to reward her for her service to, to us, uh, our, the kids that were in her class that year. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have committee reports, um, facilities, Ms. Carla Poplin.
Um, tonight, I just have uh, one announcement really. Uh, we have a joint meeting with um, the county commissioners on May 10th at 4 o'clock in this room. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Dustin Lisk.
No report for the month, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Instructional program, Mr. Bill Sorensen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We met on uh, April 24th, and we went over several different things that are gonna require some uh, board action tonight. I'd like to start by having Ms. Mandy Melton come up forward, if she would. And we have a CTE annual plan review that has to be uh, approved by the board. She can explain it, and if you check on your Board Docs, the rather lengthy data sets available there.
Thank you, Mr. Sorensen. This is actually year two of a two-year plan. Um, we are meeting meaningful progress towards all the goals that are outlined for us through the state, as well as you will see the comprehensive needs assessment that was conducted last year for the CTE program to grow and expand.
So what you need from us then, Ms. Melton, is um, the approval of the CTE plan as presented tonight?
Yes, ma'am. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Um, can I have a motion first to approve the CTE plan as presented?
I move we approve the CTE plan as presented.
A motion by Mr. Sorensen, a second. Second by Ms. Watson. Now, any discussion, board members, or any questions?
Madam Chair, um, Mrs. Melton, can you just give for the public just a sort of a hot, a quick briefing summary of, of what this plan, because it is pretty detailed in here, lots of pages, just give a highlight of, of, of all the documents.
Basically, there's two parts to it. Once every two years, we have to conduct a comprehensive needs assessment, and that was conducted last year. That's where we meet with stakeholders, we survey stakeholders. Um, CTE has teacher advisories, business advisories, where we meet with um, local businesses, we cooperate with NC Works, Next Gen, and different governmental agencies relating to employment. And from that, we gather all of that information to make a plan on how to move forward, what programs are needed, those types of things. The second part is goals outlined from the state that CTE has benchmarks that they have to meet every year. It is academic proficiency in mathematics, science, and reading. There is also a goal for non-traditional participation in CTE, which is basically um, a non-traditional gender participating in CTE classes such as a girl in construction class, or auto mechanics, or a boy in health science. such as a girl in construction class, or auto mechanics, or a boy in health science. There are also goals relating to credentials, how many students we credential each year, as well as our post-secondary attainment. In February of every year, CTE surveys each of its con, each of its concentrators to see if they have positive placement after high school. And the other goal, and the last goal, is what they call program quality, and that is our post-assessment scores, our performance-based measures that are done at the end of every course, and those things. And we are given a state benchmark and a local benchmark to meet each year. Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Are there any other questions, board members?
I don't think that this question pertains to the plan so much as, are the summer camps a part of your, your plan, or is that separate from?
Summer camps is not a part of our, our plan, it is part of an ESAR grant, and we are on year two of our summer camps, and I can give a shout-out right now, right?
Well, that was kinda what I was going, I'm, I'm looking and I didn't see it in there, but I thought, while you're up here, if you'll go ahead and just go ahead and say that, so that the kids know.
We do have a wide, wide variety of CTE camps this year. These are for rising sixth graders through 12th graders. We have so many, I can't even list them all. Girls on Fire, Girls in Firefighting, we have Basic House Repair, we have Crafting, Auto Mechanics, there's a ton. It is posted on the Stanley County Schools website. These are free of charge to the students. Each week of camp culminates with an industry field trip on Thursdays, so it's a great experience for the kids, and spots are filling up quickly.
That's what I was going to say, is I know there's probably gonna be a waiting list soon, so I hope that, you know, parents get their children. And I noticed this time too, we have something going on at every one of our high schools.
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
I applaud that, yes.
And so I would say this, since it's funded by an ESAR grant, which I think runs out in one year, we're gonna need to include this in our budget request to the county commissioners, is that correct?
I would love for you to.
In order to keep it going?
Yes. In order to keep it going free of charge. During my time that I was not in CTE, they did do some summer camps, but they were charging children for those summer camps. And the past summer with these being free of charge, we just had a great turnout, and I hope we can keep it that way.
I hope we can too, Ms. Melton, because, yeah, it, it needs to be free for our, our children, and we get so much participation. And I applaud the teachers and others who are, you know, taking part to, to do this.
And they are very, the teachers are very excited.
I'm sure. Okay, board members, I think we've had a motion, and we had a second, and we've had, okay, one question.
We're putting you on the spot, ma'am, sorry.
I, I don't really wanna give you a dollar amount tonight because I'm scared I'm gonna be wrong, but if you'll give me till tomorrow, I'll give you a dollar amount. Okay. I'm scared, I'm scared I'll shoot low.
Any more discussion, board members? All in favor say aye. Oppose no. Okay, the CTE, CTE plan has been approved as presented, thank you, Ms. Melton.
Thank you.
Mr. Sorensen, I'm turning it back over to you, I think you have something else.
Thank you. Mandy, sorry for putting you on the spot, I said I wouldn't do that, but. We have a couple other items that we need to get board approval on. One is a new elective offering at the middle school. And if I could get the young lady, Ms. White, to come up and talk about that to y'all.
Is it at the high school or the middle school?
What?
High school or middle school?
It's, it's middle school, isn't it? Just wanted to explain this. It's an elective we talked about, that is, she's just basically built an entire curriculum for us. And I want her to explain it to you.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, thank you. Why'd you put someone on the spot? Um, I'm very passionate about getting kids outdoors. We want kids to think outside the box, but we're not willing to teach them outside the box. And I think we need to get those kids back outdoors, exploring, seeing what is in the world around them. And this is not a, let's go outside and play course. This is where they get to explore things about their environment and make educated choices. It's not a pushing an agenda on children. It is about getting them invested in the world around them. There's a lot of material and equipment in that STEM lab that when Ms. Kelly retires, I wanna see it put to good use, and I think this is just a great way to twist that and use that equipment, but also give the kids something exciting. And it's also, I, I wanna reach out to kids that may not do well in a traditional class, and get those kids getting their hands dirty and addressing some of those needs. And I hope that some of that attention deficit that we may see in the classroom and behavior problems, I, I hope that we can resolve some of that when they can get some of that energy out outside and do things that actually interest them, and get them using some critical thinking skills. And I think it's just something that, when they see how passionate I am about these subjects that we'll go over, that they'll pick up on that passion too. I would love to see us use Project Learning Tree, Green Schools, and hopefully save the county some money by turning our school green. And I would love to see the end game be for us to participate in the NC Envirathon next year.
What is, what will be the name of this? But is it Outdoor STEM, is it?
It definitely needs to have some environmental, and we kinda went back and forth with it because we didn't want the title to be too long, so we kinda went with the Outdoor STEM. But definitely that environmental piece will be there. I've spent 250 hours over the past year working on my North Carolina Environmental Education Certification, and I wrapped that up last month. So, I definitely want to use that content from the workshops that I participated in to obtain that certification. So, I, definitely that environmental piece needs to be there. This world is, these kids need to understand that it's, it's not gonna be here forever if we don't take care of it, and it's theirs, and they're gonna be responsible for, and ultimately responsible for us. And so, just finding ways to get them invested in the world around them.
And I think, Mr. Sorensen, you were, I was asking about this, or whatever. This is at South Stanley Middle?
Yes ma'am.
South Stanley Middle School?
Yes ma'am.
And this will be like a rotation through for these students?
Yes ma'am. I think we discussed it being a semester, and so they would rotate to other electives. And I would feed off of Avid and possibly even the other elective courses too, having guest speakers come in, because there's so many opportunities for these kids to have outdoor jobs, environmental jobs. And so, I, I definitely think, I didn't realize this until I did Sustainable Forestry last year. Just the forestry industry is, has so many opportunities for these kids who may not want to go to four-year colleges and university. And so, it's a way to show them what's out there for them outside of secondary school.
Well, you have heard the presentation, board members. Again, this will be at South Stanley Middle School. I'm gonna go ahead and just say Outdoor STEM Class for now. Is there a motion to approve this?
I move to approve the Outdoor STEM Class.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Lisk, a second. A second by Ms. Whitaker, are there any other discussions?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just wanted, the transition to board docs kinda left me, left you guys hanging. She has this amazing complete packet of what this thing is, and she's done a ton of research. And frankly, anytime one of our top-tier teachers come to me, comes to me, is excited about something that she can bring on the benefit of our kids, how can I always say no? I do know that we, when we met, she did discuss with Mandy and the other curriculums, there'll be cross-curricular instruction, which means things that there'll be, that we talked about more than one place, that repetition. We, as a teacher, you know that's just a fantastic thing, so, highly support what she's trying to do.
I would sort of build on to that, I've known Mrs. White for a very long time, and I know that she's vested in Stanley County Schools and in the kids. And I always appreciate someone going to learn higher education or any sort of skill set, and bringing those skills and learning back, back to the school system for the benefit of the students. I'll also say this, that Kristen and Chris were the family for Camilla.
Oh, you were the family?
She is very vested in the school system.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
Thank you. I'm excited that we're gonna have this at South, but as I'm sitting here, I'm wondering, are we gonna be able to expand?
We're looking at Mr. Lee Plummer.
That won't really put you guys on the spot, but I, I just wanted to say again, sort of what Mr. Lisk was saying, thank you for going kind of above and beyond what your daily duties are, and 250 hours is a lot, so.
It was a lot of fun though.
I'm sure, we appreciate that though, and thank you for bringing this back.
Okay, so we've had a motion, we've had a second, had discussion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed no? Okay, this, this has been approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Sorensen, I think you have something else?
One more, one more item, Madam Chair. If Mr. Plummer come up and talk about our PE Advanced Studies approach that we wanna take here.
I hope you could see the passion from Ms. Owens White. She's probably crying now, she's so excited about that. The times that I've spoken with her, just her passion comes through in everything that she says and does. And this is very similar, like Ms. Owens White's course. It's not a brand-new course we're bringing from the ground up. She's taking something that we have and extending it, and making it more to be able to offer more opportunities for students. Likewise, we had our group of high school physical education teachers come to us with a vision for offering an advanced course for physical education, and being able to give some of those student athletes extended opportunities to perform not just in the weight room, but academically, and mixing those together. So, our physical education teachers at the high school level came together in March to begin developing a plan of what could this course look like? If, if we take PE as, as a freshman, a lot of our students don't go back and take another PE course, especially those that are really trying to advance that GPA, because a lot of those PE courses are just going to give them that 4.0 versus a 5.0, working on that end of things. So they came together and put together a wonderful plan of what that would look like for these students. And that it's not just a matter of going to the weight room and lifting weights, or going outside and playing on the field every day, but being able to add in exercise and diet and the nutritional side of things. They even emailed me to get ideas of where can we go with literacy standards? What do they need to be able to support that to move forward? Where can we go for those things? The teachers came up with great questions, great activities, a great rollout of what that curriculum will be. So we are excited to be able to provide that for those students, knowing that there is some momentum behind it with the teachers, to make that course bigger and better than what they even imagined at this point. So, through committee, we did have the discussion. I think in your board packet tonight, you can see a lot of the work that they have put into it. That is not even everything that they have done, but that at least got them around the table collaborating and figuring out where they could go with that initiative and that drive that they have to help support students on a different level.
I appreciate that, Mr. Plummer, and everyone that's been involved with this. Everyone's been able to read this, I believe, in your board packet, and you've heard the proposal. I would like to ask for a motion at this time, to approve the Honors Physical Education Class.
I make a motion we approve the Honors Physical Education Class as presented.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Poplin, a second. Second by Ms. Watson, any discussion?
I just wanna say thank you to Mr. Plummer, I had some questions. I had some of these PE teachers, or weightlifting teachers from the high schools reach out to me, and I just, I'm glad we're gonna be able to offer this to our athletes that wanna take that extra class, and this is just a bonus, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor say aye. Oppose no, this motion has passed, thank you, Mr. Plummer.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Ms. White?
Okay, Mr. Sorensen, I'm gonna ask you, is there something else here?
Yes, one other thing. And isn't it, Mr. Plummer, again?
Mr. Plummer again for the literary.
Okay, you're back up here.
Literacy standards that we're supposed to be working on.
So, the literacy standards that you see there in your packet, that is what we shared on behalf of those high school PE teachers that were creating their course. Literacy instruction standards are coming down to us from NCDPI to support the instruction of literacy across all content areas, not just in our English classes. There are literacy instruction standards from pre-K all the way up through 12th grade. Unlike other standards that we typically hear about on the curriculum and instruction side, they are not student-facing standards of what students are doing day in and day out. Instead, it's what teachers should be doing and what teachers should be offering for students for those opportunities to grow their literacy skills throughout the year. So, that document that you see there is the nine, grades nine through 12, a component of those literacy instruction standards that we used with the PE teachers to help develop what content needs to be in that course. So, yes, that is coming down the pipe, that is something that DPI has pushed out, and we will have additional training with, with that over the years to come. But that is just a little sampling of what it looks like at the high school level versus elementary teachers going through Letters, Professional Development, and Science of Reading at the elementary level.
So are you mainly talking about with this at the high school level now, or does it encompass all?
It will encompass all. That document is just what we use to help support that high school course, and knowing what literacy components they wanted to add into the part of it that's going to up the ante to make it more of an honors course instead of just your standard PE course.
You have heard, Mr. Plummer, present about the DPI literacy instructional standards. This one actually is coming out of committee, which all the others have come out of committee. Basically, all I need is a second to approve this. I have a second by Mr. Sorensen. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed no? This motion has passed, thank you. Next is marketing and community engagement, Ms. Vicky Watson.
I have no report, but Ms. Melissa Smith is back in the county office, so hopefully we will have a one really soon.
Okay, thank you. Policy, Ms. Robin Whitaker?
Yes, we are bringing, there are 23 policies that I'm gonna bring to you tonight to look at and ask for approval. These are available online for the public to see. If you go on board docs and look under the content tab, all of those policies are listed there for you. The first set of policies that we're asking for final approval, there are 13 of those. The first two of those, I am asking that we pull those. I'm not gonna read each policy, but I am gonna read the first two, which are the two that we are asking to pull. And that would be Policy 3200R, which is selection of instructional materials, and 3210, which is parental inspection of and objection to instructional materials. So there are, there are really 11 policies we're asking for approval, final approval.
Okay, you've heard Ms. Whitaker pulling Policy 3200R, Policy 3210. We need a motion to give the final approval to the remaining policies, do I have a motion?
I make a motion we approve the, or approve the list for final policy approval minus 32R and 3210.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Poplin, a second. Second by Mr. Lisk, all in favor say aye. Or, excuse me, are there any discussions? All in favor say aye. Any opposed no? Okay, these policies have been approved, and then the approval of those that were pulled. Thank you. You have policies to be rescinded.
Right, there are 10 policies that we are requesting to be rescinded, and we need board approval for that also.
Okay, I need, and you see these board members, may I have a motion to approve the policies being rescinded?
Make a motion, we approve the policies to be rescinded.
A motion by Ms. Poplin, a second. Second by Mr. Lisk. All in favor, say, any discussion?
Just, just for the public's benefit, and I know Robin knows this, these are just ones that have been changed. We're not getting rid of any. It's just ones that have been replaced. So it may look different on Board Docs, like we're just throwing out some, and I don't, I don't want anybody to think that.
Thank you for clarifying that. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Okay, these policies have been approved to be rescinded. Anything else, Ms. Whitaker?
No.
Thank you. Next is safety and security. Dr. Rufus Leffler? Thank you. Next up is curriculum and instruction. Do we have anything that we haven't already gone over?
Everything is covered in committee.
Okay, thank you. Auxiliary services, I believe I have you, Mr. Dudley, and Ms. Mayberry?
Yes. First of all, on the agenda is our child nutrition procurement plan. This is a plan that needs to be, that has to be done and met every, every two years. The last one that has been brought to y'all was back in 2019 or to the board at that time for approval. This is actually a template that DPI has given out for child nutrition programs, and then you tweak it for your county LEA. So you see it in your packet. At this point in time, if you have any questions, Michaela's here to help answer those. If you have any questions concerning procurement plan.
It was rather lengthy.
Yes, there are seven parts, and in some of those parts, there's very lengthy in some of those parts. And it's all, like I said, it's a template from DPI that they require us to have, and it should have been done two years ago, and it was not brought to the board on that, so.
And you and Ms. Mayberry, y'all have had discussion, everything about this?
Yes, ma'am.
And Dr. Dennis. All right, board members, I know that it was very lengthy. We've had a chance to look through that. What's the pleasure of the board in adopting this 2023 child nutrition procurement plan?
I move to adopt the plan.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Lisk, a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dr. Leffler. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Okay, the 2023 child nutrition procurement plan has been approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank both of you.
Okay, the second item on the agenda is talking about the supplemental funds for teacher compensation, which was a allotment that we received last year for teachers to supplement what LEA's already had in place for teacher bonuses or supplements. This funding last year was a little less than a million dollars. There were 638 certified individuals that received that bonus of $1,100. This year, in the second rollout of this, of this funding from DPI or from the state and the General Assembly, the amount that we've got this year is $1.7 million. So based on the way the formula is to calculate that, we have to bring to the board the number of individuals that's eligible and divide that into the allocation along with the social security and retirement benefit that the employer has to pay. There's roughly, the amount that I calculated, the $1,750,009. There's 620 staff members that's eligible, based on the policy that you, that was approved by the board last year, and you'll see that. It says that Stanley County Board of Education approved the use of the above said funds to pay all certified instructional staff a bonus. The bonus is payable in May of '22 and each subsequent year if the funding is guaranteed from the North Carolina General Assembly. The amount of the bonus can be varied from year to year depending on the allocation from DPI and the maximum amount determined by DPI. The bonus will be determined by the board. So I'm bringing to y'all the board for y'all to approve the amount that I've calculated. The bonus, the staff must be employed and in paid status as of May 1st, and if the staff is employed less than 100%, then they'll receive a prorated amount of that bonus. Based on the calculation I have come up with, the bonus this year would be $2,135 per certified individual, certified staff member. It may tweak a little higher than that, but until we actually process the payroll and know what it comes up with, the amount that we're working with right now is $2,135 per staff member.
Mr. Dudley, I think as you stated before, just to make sure everyone understands, this is for certified instructional staff. This is not for administration principals.
Exactly. Certified instructional staff, people who would be paid on the teacher-certified pay scale.
And that's roughly almost double what they received last year.
Yes, it is.
And Mr. Dudley, did you say how many employees we?
There's roughly, right now, based on today, we've calculated 620 staff members that will be eligible for this bonus. And it will be payable in May, on May 25th, if, you know, if the board agrees to that.
And just so some of the teachers that brought this to light understand that this is state-paid money from the legislature that was, I think, as part of their budget last year.
Yes, it was part of the biannual budget that was put in the budget last year. It's nothing dealing with COVID funds, extra funds, or anything of that sort. It was actually a budget line item that was put in the budget last year that would continue in the second year of the biannual.
And there's no, and there's no match?
And there's no match. It's not a county-paid.
No.
It's just essentially a pass-through from the state based on their formulas.
Yes, it's just a pass-through from the state based on their formulas. The only thing we have to calculate is, like he said, we just have to put in how many people we have and take out the.
The social security and retirement.
And that's all we do with the money, and they send it through.
And we can provide that communication in the newsletter.
Yes, I have that already.
Newsletter goes out tomorrow.
For tomorrow.
So I'm going to thank the finance department, Mr. Dudley, for bringing this. Dr. Dennis, I know that you worked diligently on it, so I appreciate that.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you. May I have a motion at this time to approve the supplemental funds for the certified teacher compensation?
I move to approve the supplemental certified teacher compensation.
I have a motion by Mr. Lisk, a second. Second by Ms. Poplin. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. This has been approved. Thank you, Mr. Dudley. You're, everyone that works with you, thank you, Dr. Dennis. And thank you to our finance committee as well. Next on your agenda is superintendent comments.
I'll try to be brief. When I added earlier today, received an email and just to let everybody know on the board that Part VII of House Bill 2019 has been removed. So no longer will there be any financial strain put on the school systems for monies that belong to the school system and are not being used by charter schools. So I want to thank all the legislators that had a hand in trying to get that removed. I know you guys had put out a resolution earlier, so obviously the people heard us, and we won't have to worry about that. The growth awards, I should have, I was remiss earlier if I wouldn't admit or say that the growth awards were sponsored by Skate City, Dusty Laney last year. Actually donated a money for those awards, so I wanted to thank him for that and just to show him that this, this tradition will endure. May 8th through the 12th is Teacher Appreciation Week. This is where we show our appreciation for those who've taught us and everyone that has a favorite teacher to help to inspire them. This week, actually, it's Thursday on the 4th, we'll have a community meeting at South Stanley Middle School for the strategic plan review. We had one earlier for Albemarle last Thursday. I thought it went very well, was well-attended, and I want to thank all of the people, both the staff and the parents and community members who come out to help us refine our strategic plan. We have three more or two more after this Thursday. We have one on May 11th that will be at West Stanley Middle School and one on the 18th, which will be at North Stanley Middle School. And please be aware that all of these start at 6:00, and we try to make them only last an hour, so we try to end by as close as we can to 7:00. May 1st yesterday was School Principals Day, and just to recognize the importance of our principals from elementary to high and all the work they do. The same day was also Substitute Appreciation Day. We honored some subs earlier today to thank them for the dedicated and wonderful job that they do when they fill in for our teachers every day. May 5th, a big day with School Lunch Hero Day, celebrating the showcases of the difference between school nutrition professionals. This, the professionals make for every child who comes through the cafeteria. You will be in trouble if you forget what May 14th is. Mother's Day, celebrating and honoring the mothers of our families as well as motherhood, maternal bonds, and influence of mothers in our lives. May 10th, also important, School Nurses Day, establish the foster better understanding of the roles of school nurses in education. May 18th is National Speech Pathologist Day, and these are professionals who specialize in treatment of communication, cognitive communication, voice, and swallowing disorders. Another one dear to me, May 20th is Armed Forces Day. It's a holiday for people all over the world to come together, thank men and women of the United States Armed Forces. And the 29th, the official start of summer, is Memorial Day, a dedicated time to honor those who died fighting in the U.S. Armed Forces. A very, very important day that we must recognize. You know, it's not just a day that we have off and we, you know, go on a long vacation, but there are a lot of those who sacrificed their lives for the friends we had today. May 27th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., we have a Community Health Fair. This Community Health Fair is in the Stanley Family Education Center across the road, and we have a keynote speaker named Talk Hop. He'll be there from 7:00 to 8:00. I highly recommend you attending. And the last thing, this was the, my understanding is, and I think I'm right on this, the first time that the board's ever used Board Docs or a kind of electronic method, and there's a lot of work in the back, you know, in the behind-the-scenes, I should say, that goes into getting this and running this. I thought it ran very smoothly tonight. I want to thank Ms. Miller-Dreyf for all her hard work in getting this going, because I know it's no small task when you integrate and start something going from paper to digital, and I thought everything went well. I don't have anything else. I yield my time, and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dennis. Next is board comments. Dr. Leffler, I'm going to call on you first.
It was great to see the positivity in the meeting tonight. It was great to see everybody recognized and the awards they got from our students and our faculty, certified, non-certified. Everyone was recognized, which is great, because it takes everyone to run the school. Thank you for the ones that did the board comments. We, I mean, the public comments, that was great. We appreciate that. We hear you. And it's been a good meeting, and everything's really been positive, and have a good time till next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Leffler. Board members, I'm going to call on you to see if you have anything additional to add to what Dr. Dennis or Dr. Leffler have already added. Ms. Watson?
Well, I did tell everything he had to say, and I want to thank the county office for all the hard work that they do. I come in here and they're just running around like bees, getting everything done, and I do appreciate that so, so much. I do appreciate everybody in our school systems. I love these children, and I hope they will, the next couple weeks, get it all together, and it'll be time for summer, and then back again next August. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Mr. Sorensen?
Thank you, Chairman. What a wonderful celebration this meeting's been from meeting Camilla, the globe-trotting student that came 7,000 miles to attend Stanley County Schools, to our, our growth school winners. In my opinion, growth is the only true metric of learning, because you, you get growth regardless of demographics and socioeconomics. It's the teachers getting the things done. So also had the pleasure of attending the North Carolina Skills USA Conference in Greensboro. Dr. De survived another road trip with me. God bless the man. And got to see some of our best and brightest kids compete and winning in, and winning in career-ready competitions. Several of these kids are state champions in their chosen contests. I believe one will be representing the state of North Carolina National Event in June. That's a big deal. I've been there. It's a big deal. So much to celebrate, but have to ask, are we feeding the kids on the West End something different, or is there something in the water out there? Three out of four accountability growth winners coming from the West End, I got to wonder what's going on with that. They did fantastic. All four schools were, high schools were represented at the skills event, but West Stanley took their lion's share of the awards. They were also named a chapter of excellence, which is just another, you know, golden achievement. Bravo to all our winners tonight, and it's a great night to be part of Stanley High Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Sorensen. Ms. Whitaker?
Well, we've recognized so many people tonight, but I wanted to just take a minute to kind of direct this to our principals. I wrote some notes, because I knew I'd forget everything. I think when you work in a school and you're able to kind of see what the day-to-day operations are, and you have the ability to watch our principals every day and see what they do, you truly appreciate it a little bit more. And because May 1st was National Principals Day, I just wanted to take a moment to express my sincere appreciation to our principals and all that they do for our school. Their leadership and their dedication and their hard work, I think, is just essential in creating an environment where our students can thrive and they have the ability to thrive every day. You know, as principals, I think you have a challenging role that requires you to balance the need of students. You have staff that you need to balance things for. You have parents that you need to balance things for, and you're trying to do all this while your school runs smoothly, and sometimes that's really difficult to do. I think your tireless efforts to provide a quality education for our students is truly commendable, and your commitment to continuous improvement for our school system is just, we appreciate that just so much. So I just wanted to kind of congratulate you on your day and tell you we thank you for everything that you do for, for our students and for our school system and our county.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker. Mr. Lisk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I knew Mr. Anthony Grace was going to be here. I had prepared longer comments tonight, but I'm, in your honor, but I'm going to keep it short. Thank you for, for coming up here to speak, though. I think what you spoke about is very important. I want to thank the policy committee and Ms. Whitaker for chairing that, and Mr. Sorensen for the discussion prior. So I think that's, there's still more work to do, and thank you for coming. I'm going to reiterate what Mrs. Poplin said earlier in her comments about the joint school board and county commissioner meeting on May the 10th at 4:00. We heard Mr. Dudley speak about the certified staff receiving the state, you know, bonus or supplement coming down annually. Stanley County Schools is, again, not a taxing authority. We can only budget for the money that is allocated to us from the county. That's the only unrestricted funding that we receive. The remaining funding that we receive comes from the state and from the federal government, but primarily annually from the state, which is highly restricted. That's audited every year, so, you know, those, those audits are public. The, the budgets are public, and this is a, an opportunity, as the county commissioners go to vote on funding for our school systems, to give you an idea and probably more to remind you that some things that are paid locally by the county that help us compete with our surrounding counties are teacher supplements. They are some bus driver pay and classified pay, because this North Carolina State does have allotment formulas, and they don't pay for everything. So this is the chance to speak up, to, to help us with our funding requests. I know Mr. Grace back there has fought that fight for a very long time, and I think we're working well with, with the county. They have their own challenges as well, but we hope to keep the communication going. We hope these joint meetings continue to be conducive to working together on behalf of the county to do the right thing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lisk. Ms. Poplin?
Thank you for saying all that, Dustin. Yeah, and if you want to come out and be a part of that meeting, please do so. I also want to thank our speakers tonight, all the recognitions. I want to thank the folks that have been getting that strategic plan together for these public meetings, and there'll be one again this, this Thursday, so look for those in your area, and please come out to those and give us your input on that. The first one was very successful. Just want to take a moment to, again, just stress the thank you to the folks that worked on the PE honors and the outdoor STEM classes, because that is above and beyond what those staff do daily, and to kind of go above and beyond, we just want to congratulate them and thank them for all the hard work they've put in for that. I was able to take some time today and cover the cafeteria ease for teachers while they got a duty-free lunch. That was very, very interesting and enjoyable. So that was very, very interesting and enjoyable. So if there's anybody that would like to do that, I'm sure their school's still in that the rest of the week. Just take some time and open some milk cartons and juice and that kind of stuff. They will appreciate it. And I just want to say, you know, with it being teacher appreciation, sub-appreciation, principal today, it's, you know, somebody in education, thank them. And then I just wanted to comment on the Leela experience. Myself and Ms. Gibson learned so much over the last four and a half months, I would say it is, and have just made connections all throughout the state with folks that we met there. And I'm just really appreciative for that experience, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poplin. I can echo what everyone said, and I'm not going to repeat things. I do enjoy and have enjoyed when we go into the schools, visiting our schools. It is amazing what we see and the teachers, the students, just everyone, principals, the staff, just totally amazing. And I know that many of us are going, making visits into the schools. Some of us, sometimes you might see more of us than others, and sometimes it might be one. But we certainly, we certainly enjoy doing that, and I just give a huge shout-out to all of our schools. I would be remiss if I did not call out Mr. Anthony Graves. How did you keep that to three minutes? Did you really practice it? Okay. I mean, you know, what did I used to do up here? I was like, kind of like, whatever. Thank you for speaking. And to our board members and Dr. Dennis and to Hope. I'm loving this Board Docs, even though many times here, Ms. Poplin's had to help me. But I'm learning, and it's great that we're not having to chop down all the trees with paper. So we'll get better and better at this. And I think our board has recently kind of seen democracy in action with our board members, and I so appreciate that. The date and time for our next regularly scheduled board meeting is Tuesday, June 6th, 2023, in the Jean McIntyre Room, beginning at 6:15 p.m. I do not believe we need to go back into closed session. So at this time, it is Personnel Administration and Student Services. I will turn this over to you, Ms. Wood.
Right, good evening. This evening, your personnel agenda was provided to you in Board Docs. Section 1 does not require action, and Section 2 does require your action. So I would ask for your vote at this time.
You've all been able to look over personnel agenda. May I have a motion to approve Section 2 of the personnel agenda?
I make a motion. Will you approve Section 2 of the personnel agenda as presented?
A motion by Ms. Poplin, a second. Second by Ms. Whitaker. All in favor say aye. Opposed no. Section 2 has been approved. Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, I need a motion to adjourn. Y'all always scare me. I say that, and then it's like a delay. And I'm like, is anybody going to adjourn? Okay.
Full circle.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Lisk, a second by Ms. Poplin. All in favor say aye. Opposed no. We are adjourned. Thank you.